Got the okay from Will, Mayor Bynum.
Good afternoon. I am Barbara Bynum. I'm the mayor and I'm going to call a special city council meeting to order. It is Wednesday, May 13th. This meeting is being held virtually online at 12:30 PM, and I will ask Mr. Piccolo to take a roll call of city council.
Barbara, excuse me, Barbara Bynum?
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
All city council members are present.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we are going to consider the, on our agenda, it's item three, city council consideration of participation in Montrose County's request for variance to the governor state safer at home restrictions. And we are going to turn it over to Dr. Joe Adragna, who is the county's medical officer. There's probably a better title, and Dr. Joe, I invite you to introduce yourself with the right title. I'm going to turn it over to him. He has a presentation and will take us through the information we're going to be looking at today.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum and city council members for giving me the opportunity to meet with you today. My name is Dr. Joe Adragna. I serve in several roles with the county at this time in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm the medical advisor to the public health director, the board of health pandemic medical specialist, and the emergency operations center, incident commander. Today, we're in unprecedented times, and I'd like to thank and recognize Mayor Bynum, City Manager Bill Bell, and Chief Blaine Hall for your leadership on the medical response team and in the emergency operations center. With just over 24 hours notice, this team has assembled today to review the current COVID-19 data and a proposed variance application to executive order D 20044 and public health order 20-28. I recognize how short of a timeline this is and thank each of you for adjusting your schedules to have this important meeting today. As you know, the public health department, board of health, and board of county commissioners respects this body and the leadership you show. We respectfully request your endorsement of this variance application. Fundamentally, we believe that this variance application is measured reasonable and deliverable without causing undue public health risk. I'd like to take us back about eight weeks. The time was early March. Montrose was told that we needed to increase ICU capacity by 500%. We were told we needed to go from 32 med surg hospital beds to 100. We were told we needed a tier three alternative care site for 24/7 skilled nursing level care, and we needed to set up a shelter. We were told that all hospitals would surge at the same time. Hospitals were concerned that they would not be able to transfer patients out of the facility if the hospital was at capacity. We ultimately feared that many would die because they would not get a ventilator or a hospital bed. Montrose Memorial Hospital and the emergency operations center heard these calls loud and clear. Montrose Memorial Hospital increased their ICU capacity 600%, going from eight-bed capacity to 48-bed capacity. A med surg overflow plan was put together and 50 COTS currently sit in Columbine Middle School, ready to be used. The county, Montrose Fire Protection District, Montrose Memorial Hospital, and a private facility entered into an agreement and set up an additional 30 to 50-bed skilled nursing facility option for COVID-19 patients. Further, we have worked with local hotel years to enter into an agreement in principle that would allow us to activate a 20-bed non-congregate shelter if so needed. The county reached out to 150 nurses in the community to recruit additional resources. Montrose Memorial Hospital and the county sourced medical assistants, EMTs, and other healthcare staff to build up capacity, and these folks have not been needed. Montrose Memorial Hospital sourced an additional half dozen physicians that would perform rounds in these overflow sites of care. They have not been used. We did not overwhelm our capacity. No one died because they could not receive adequate care. To date, the highest number of confirmed COVID-19 hospitalizations is five, and the highest number of patients on a ventilator is two. Our highest hospital census, for all reasons, is 30, and this occurred on April 7th, with a normal operating capacity at the hospital of 50. We have at least 72 days of PCR-based testing capacity if we stopped receiving all shipments in today and stopped doing saliva-based PCR testing. With saliva-based PCR testing, we essentially have an unlimited testing capacity. To support epidemiologic information and modeling, Montrose supports a state project to distribute 1,000 to 2,000 smart thermometers where a resident can check their temperature, and the result is aggregated and distributed to public health. This technology may provide a two-week heads-up to hospital census changes. We expect to have those available in the coming weeks. Further, Montrose Memorial Hospital will be introducing antibody testing that will be done in-house with a same-day or next-day turnaround time. They have 5,000 kits that will be available before the end of the month, and this will help us know more about the number recovered and susceptible in the community. Nine days ago, I was honored to present to you during your work session. I presented a model that showed we were not out of the woods and that we needed to remain vigilant. That position has not changed. However, the probability of worst-case and best-case scenarios has changed as we continue to gain more understanding in data. Late last week, we implemented CDPHE guidance to change isolation requirements to 10 days. We learned that the longest time that nasal samples taken from a symptomatic person with COVID-19 would grow SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, was nine days. The CDC models that the contagious period is closer to five days for most people. This allowed us to change our model to a seven-day recovery slash infectious period time, down from 14, and this resulted in a substantial reduction on the transmissibility of the virus. This lowered the height of the peak that was expected in the summer. Additionally, the regional epidemiology team housed out of Mesa County reviewed our model for two hours on Friday with me. They commented that the previous projections that I presented to this council last week would be a worst-case scenario, and the projections presented in the variance application are more likely to be a reality, recognizing that the virus may lose transmissibility in the summer due to antigenic shift and environmental factors. Further, they note that the reality of the situation is better for the entire region than even their best-case scenario. With this updated model, the realization that we have a low but steady level of COVID-19 transmission, a recognition of our strong healthcare reserve, our ability to perform robust testing at a level that has been consistently above the state average, contact tracing that has not exceeded 40% of capacity, broad education area businesses on best practices, including employee screening, along with a unique business ambassador program, a joint program with the city of Montrose and Montrose County, outbreak site mitigation and intervention procedures that have prevented an outbreak in a high vulnerability population since early April, a low risk of imported cases with a management plan in place, and a fully integrated community. We satisfy not only the CDPHE requirement for a variance, but also the World Health Organization's six key steps to transitioning to and maintaining a steady state of low or no transmission. As the World Health Organization states, "The best-case outcome in the short and medium term in the absence of a safe and effective vaccine is for communities to transition to a controlled, steady state." The specific variance that you are considering today is not to throw out the existing executive order or state public health order. It is certainly not a message that masks should not be worn or that social distancing is no longer needed. To the contrary, this variance application is a recognition of the thoughtfulness of those orders and their effectiveness at flattening the curve. That has been achieved. This variance application is a recognition that masks still need to be worn and that we should maintain social distancing whenever possible. This is a recognition that those who are high-risk should continue to stay at home as much as possible. Specifically, this variance application relates to three industries: restaurants, gyms, and houses of worship. Regarding all of these variances, the underlying concept is that these modifications to the existing order will not so drastically impact transmissibility that we will lose public health intervention effectiveness and surge. Rather, implementing all of these variance requests may lead to a slight increase in cases, but will not pose a threat to our ability to detect, trace, and care for the sick and exposed. Further, the variance language is adapted from Mesa County with modifications to the industry-specific guidance based on CDPHE Executive Director Ryan's approval with amendments. We want to maintain consistency across the counties for ease of communication and compliance. Regarding restaurants, this variance would allow restaurants to have dine-in service for up to 30% of their occupancy load. Regarding gyms, this variance would allow for in-facility activities with up to 30% of their occupancy load and strict adherence to sanitation protocols. Regarding houses of worship, this variance would allow for in-facility activities with up to 30% of their occupancy load not to exceed 50 persons. The variance application has been endorsed by Montrose County Public Health Director Jim Austin, Montrose Memorial Hospital Board of Directors Chair Dr. Davis, Montrose Memorial Hospital Emergency Department Director Dr. Dreitline, Montrose Memorial Hospital ICU Director Dr. Bolton, Montrose Memorial Hospital CEO James Kaiser, Montrose Fire Protection District Chief Rowan, Montrose County Sheriff Gene Lillard, Senator Quorum, Representative Catlin, and Uray Public Health Director Tanner Kingery. I thank the mayor and this council for your consideration of the variance application. I hope that you endorse the application, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. The board of county commissioners will meet today at 4:00 PM, where we will present the variance application and answer any questions from the board as they consider whether to move forward with this variance application or not.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. Adragna. I think what we'll do is we'll have questions from council for Dr. Adragna first, followed by an opportunity for public comment, followed by council discussion, followed by a possible council vote. So with that format in place, are there any questions from council for Dr.? There we go. Okay, Mr. Frank?
Yes, Dr. Joe, a couple of questions. What would the variance do as far as the library being able to reopen, as far as the CMU campuses attendance being able to increase, and for non-critical manufacturing facilities, as far as their workforce and their production lines?
Thank you for that question. So without getting to the very specifics of each one of those, because I'd have to pull up one by one the variance application, which we can do, have to do so, but the general intent is to honor the limitation of congregation of 10 persons or more. However, in a workspace setting, it can be more than those 10 persons. We would ask that the workplaces, like manufacturing, would continue to maintain a distance of six feet when possible for their work stations, that we would continue to encourage employee screening of people coming into the workplace, including visitors, and then excluding if they are symptomatic. We would encourage continued use of mask for the persons who would be within six feet of another person or those who would wear or use a shared workstation. Councilmember Frank, can I go through the individual specific ones, or is that a satisfactory answer for you, sir?
I think that's satisfactory, but if you choose to delve a little deeper for the public information, that might be beneficial.
Okay, I'll then start with the education components. And so as the, those watching now or in the future can look on the draft that's been proposed and now moved into a final version for the stakeholders' review, what we would do modeling what happened in Mesa County is a recommendation that we limit in-person learning for specific settings, that we limit classrooms to no more than 10 persons, that we maintain at least a six-feet distance from each other, that higher education, K through 12, and organized youth activities should remain closed. Childcare facilities can reopen if not already open, but they should perform frequent environmental cleaning and disinfection. All employees should continue to wear a non-medical cloth face covering over the nose and mouth while working with children. They should maintain at least six feet of distance from their coworkers. They should implement physical distance protocols in common areas, such as separating tables and chairs by at least six feet. That symptomatic children should be excluded from care, and to the extent possible, limit the sharing of utensils, toys, and classroom materials, and to the extent possible, limit shared spaces to one classroom at a time. And then, Councilmember Frank, would you direct me to another industry-specific guidance that you were questioning?
The other question was concerning the library reopening?
We don't have any specific language in the document that would be focused only on the library. So we would ask that that operation maintain the intent of the variance applications, which would be to limit occupancy load, to maintain social distancing, to encourage mask use for their visitors, to encourage people who are symptomatic to not come into the library. And then, we've also been in direct conversations between our public health director and myself with the leadership of the library to help counsel them about materials handling.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mr. Anderson, I see your hand up.
Okay, thank you. First, a comment. I want to say, doctor, that the readiness that you described early on in the pandemic, I want to commend you for that, and the fact that we were so well-prepared has obviously helped our community. Nonetheless, though, we have continually had about double the case rate as Mesa County, and I believe also death rate, and we're, you know, about a fifth the size. So not doing the math in my head, that's roughly 10 times the per capita incidence, and I wonder if that still justifies us to copy their early opening, given the fact that we seem to be at a higher rate than they are.
Thank you, sir. Those are very reasonable considerations and have been shared by multiple others, so I trust you're not alone in that consideration. Mesa County certainly does have a lower case rate per capita than Montrose. If you look at the map of the state, it appears that the closer you are to ski resorts, the higher the case rate your community experiences. And I think Montrose is near to ski resorts, and we have a great airport, so it led to some increased transmissibility within our community. With that being said, the intent all along, as echoed from the federal, state, and local level, was not to prevent people from getting COVID, but to prevent unnecessary deaths from COVID due to public health surge and hospital systems being overwhelmed. And so with that in mind, we recognize that we do have more cases than Mesa County. We also recognize that we are prepared to take care of our community. That being said, I have specifically asked Mesa County, what public health intervention have you done that we could mirror that would achieve the same results? And they have not been able to provide a specific public health intervention that would be different than what we have done. It's simply a matter of the number of cases that we had early on and then trying to contain that transmissibility. Many people have asked then, why would we model Mesa County at all? What's interesting is if you look at Google Mobility Data Report that was recently released up to May 7th, Montrose and Mesa County's mobility data is essentially identical. We have about the same amount of change from baseline in retail and recreational use, and about the same amount as a percentage from our baseline in our population staying close to or in their home. That's an interesting finding, I think, because in a setting where they have relaxed and we have not, we have the same mobility trends, and neither community has seen a significant increase in cases. So I guess the way I would answer that in summary is, the fundamentals are still sound. We can do this without the unnecessary death of people because we did not have hospital resources to take care of them, or we did not have public health resources to try and contain outbreaks or cases. And two, we also think that having consistency amongst the communities is very important to enhance compliance. We've heard from a lot of folks who do require travel between the communities for work or other purposes, that it is difficult to maintain compliance when they change simply by crossing an arbitrary line in the road.
Okay, one more thing. Restaurants, churches, and gyms are all kind of closed environments, and it's sometimes difficult for people not to be close to each other, especially, I know at our church, it gets pretty full. So I trust your 30% has been, you know, studied and calculated, and I guess I'd just be concerned about those environments in particular because people spend a greater amount of time there. So exposure times the amount of time you get the exposure increases your chances of contracting it. And so I guess I'm just concerned that as you do this, you help people understand the precautions that are necessary and that they take those seriously, and hopefully, you know, we can do this, and everyone benefits, and we don't get any resurgence or spike in cases. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir, and I echo those. And we'll just point out that the restaurant-specific guidance is asking people to not go to the restaurant with non-family members or non-acquaintances that they haven't already been in close contact with, and if they do go to a house of worship, then to sit with their family members and maintain six feet of distance from others. And I'll just point out, this is really important for everybody viewing to understand. This is not a mandate that you have to go to the restaurant, or go to the gym, or go to the house of worship. If you are uncomfortable, then you should stay at home, and that's okay. That's the right thing to do for you. I think that this will self-select those persons who tend to be lower risk anyways, and we'll need to make sure that we remain vigilant with that population as they have a higher chance of being an asymptomatic person with the virus, that they continue to wear a mask and do their part to keep the rest of us safe.
Great, thank you, sir. Doctor.
Thank you. I see Mr. Bowman had his hand. Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, I first want to say, Dr. Adragna, I think you have done just an excellent job putting all these statistics and reports together. I would really encourage the community to look at this document. It's very, very thorough. It's pretty amazing, and I thank you for that. And doctor, I don't know if you have any ability to look into your crystal ball. I don't want to take science away from you, but you have any idea what this summer's going to look like as we move into July and August?
Can you give me a specific date? I'll tell you.
July 4th.
All right. July 4th, we're going to have 373 actively infected persons. So that's a little bit of humor. You're absolutely right. Nobody has a perfect crystal ball, but my crystal ball says 373.85 actively infected persons. Lot of variables here that we can't measure, but with that number as a percentage of our whole population, that is very small. And at that time, it would project that we might have six confirmed hospitalized patients within Montrose Hospital at that time. Important thing to keep in mind is that for every confirmed case, we've been averaging about 2.5 to 2.76 persons under investigation. And we also have patients that are in the hospital that don't have COVID at all, and so that might put us with a hospital census of around 34 or 35 at that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowman, any further questions from you?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Glassbell, would you like an opportunity?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the doctor for all the work that... We get notes coming in from residents concerned about if we let up a little bit on where we are, they'll just give up everything and go on about their life. I think that's a concern. I think we've already seen that in some respect. Do you have any comments on that?
Thank you for that. It is absolutely imperative that we maintain vigilance here. This is not a request to go back to normal, but the governor has been able to allow modifications to the strictness of these rules, and we have not seen that the public has gone back to complete normalcy. And so I would encourage them to continue to use their good judgment and continue to use their... You know, I've said this before, I think that there are a lot of good people in this community, and if we saw a little old person who fell on the corner of a road, we'd stop and help them. And that same person should wear a mask right now, because it's not about you getting sick and dying. It's about you giving that virus to someone and not knowing it and killing them. And we will get through this, and at some point, that won't be our reality. But today, we are still asking people to do their part. We're asking them to do their part while we relax a little bit so that we can save some jobs in this community and start to phase back in some semblance of normalcy. We have to do it in phases. It can't be a light-switch effect. We have to put our toe in the water and do this slowly so that we can reevaluate what the impact of those phase changes are over time, and we want to continue to reevaluate this. We'll continue to message from our emergency operations center the importance of these public health interventions. If we went to a 0% public health intervention effectiveness, in a worst-case scenario, 0%, we would absolutely have a problem. We would not be able to take care of all the people that would need to be taken care of. It would be a problem. We are not there to say, go back to normal. This is saying we can let a few more people into restaurants. We can let a few more people into the gym. We can let a few more people into houses of worship. And then we will reevaluate that data, and we'll continue to provide the community with that information that they need to make decisions to keep each other safe.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Joe. So what you're saying is, by relaxing some of the restrictions, we will see more people get sick, but we currently have the capacity in our local hospital that the hospital isn't going to be over capacity. I mean, if we were to summarize in just one sentence what you've presented us?
Yes, that would essentially be it. I would only take issue with the word "will." I hedge a lot more than that. We may see more cases. It's not unreasonable that we would see more cases, but it would not be to a level where we would overwhelm our resources.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Mr. Frank, I see your hand.
One further question, perhaps clarification. If we, when we relax this and allow restaurants at 30% and houses of worship and so on, if we do not see a corresponding increase, would we have the flexibility to increase that ratio or the number of people allowed into those areas?
So thank you, sir, for that question. I believe that the safer-at-home orders, the reference public health orders and executive directive, executive order from the governor, will go through their expiration date on the 27th, and then eventually, we may have a new set of public health orders and executive orders. And we'll evaluate at that time what those orders mean for our community and whether they're appropriate for our community without a variance application at that time. It would not be surprising to me if we are meeting again at some point in a couple of weeks to review those changes and evaluate whether that's right for our community with your input.
So are you saying that the variance we're asking for applies specifically to a state public health order and a governor's order, both of which expire on May 27th, at which case, we may or may not need to apply for another variance to a new set of orders?
That's true.
Okay, so the variance we're requesting is for the, was really for 14 days?
Yes, and then we'll have to reevaluate what the new set of orders would come out in, say.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other councilor questions for Dr. Adragna? Okay, then can I also summarize what we're even doing here? So the county is the entity that requests a variance from the state. They do not require the city's participation, but they have asked the city to sign on to their variance request, believing that that makes the request to the state a stronger ask. So we are here today to talk about the city signing on to the request, the county, I think it's fair to say, is deciding today at their meeting this afternoon whether or not to submit. I think it's their intent to submit it, but I think they're deciding that formally this afternoon. Is everyone clear? Is everyone on council clear about that, or if I've mischaracterized that in any way? Mr. Bell, can you chime in? Okay, that being said, we always want to allow time to hear from the public. So for those who are new to Zoom, there's this great feature where you can raise your hand, and it's down at the bottom. If you're on a computer, it's down at the bottom of your screen. And so we're going to start like that, and we'll see how many participants would like to raise their hand to be noticed, in which case, we'll allow for public comment. If all 37 attendees want to speak, we're going to have to talk about limiting comments. Normally, we would limit comments to three minutes. You can do the math, and you could still see we'd be here for another hour and a half if everyone wanted to talk. So you might find that if you feel like your position has been well-represented, that you don't need to add on, but we do want to give you that opportunity. So I'm looking for hands. I don't know if I can see them, Greg, or Mr. Story, if only you can see hands. Either there aren't any, or I'm not able to access the hand.
Here is one here, Mr. Kevin Coons. I will allow him to talk.
Great. So I don't have the wording in front of me right now, but basically, public comment is an opportunity for citizens to address council. It's not an opportunity for back and forth necessarily, but it is your opportunity to tell us what's on your mind. But it is your opportunity to tell us what's on your mind. Please remember to be civil and polite. And with that, and also to limit your comments, generally, we ask three minutes. If we're in council chambers, there's a light that goes on and bells and whistles that go on. And we don't have that here. So we're a little bit on the honor system. And please excuse me if I have to step in to cut you off if you're going on for longer. With that, Mr. Coons.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for being on this and letting me get on here for a minute, and I will be short. First, a comment. I don't think anybody, for most anybody in town, doesn't want to see small businesses open. Doesn't want to see anybody go out of business, understands the jobs and everything out there. But what I heard a lot in the presentation today was two little words that always scare me that you guys share, and it's called good judgment and common sense. Those are all great, except for as we've seen, that isn't being observed on a daily basis through this whole shutdown. So my concern is, is that for me going out and other people I've talked to, which really bothersome to me, is when I walk into a business. And of course, I'm always wearing a mask because I have senior parents that I have in lockdown. But I I guess what bothers me is I I can't understand for the life of me how I can walk into a business and the six people in there are not wearing a mask. I mean, to me, that is just outrageous. So as we go through trying to open up and give people more flexibility, isn't there a way that we can ask businesses that if you want to be in business, we're only going to ask, really, I'd love to see two things, but I'll go with one, that your employees should be in masks, period. There should be no exceptions to that. Me, I'd love to see it, but no business lets anybody in without a mask, but we know that's going to be crazy. That's never going to happen. But if we're going to start loosening these in restaurants and be in a restaurant too for thirty-five years, I know the workings of a restaurant, expect everything to be sanitary and safe after every meal and something is you you're it's not going to happen. So anyways, is that something we can do?
Thank you very much, Mr. Coons. I believe that this order or this variance request does outline that restaurant servers, restaurant workers are required to wear masks. Dr. Dragne, is that correct? And when it comes to restaurants, there's a requirement beyond that? It's a recommendation?
Yes, so it says employees and contracted workers whose duties include include close contact with members of the public shall wear a non-medical face cloth covering over the nose and mouth. And it also says, and this was direct from the CDPHE executive director's amendment to the Mesa County variance application, was that customers shall wear face coverings when entering the restaurant until seated at their tables.
Thank you. And then I think now we have another participant unmuted, Mr. Matthew Gallegos. Are you wishing to make some public comments? And if so, you are allowed to talk, but you need to unmute yourself.
Hi. Mr. Gallegos, I don't believe he has a question.
Okay, I could just see that he was he was allowed. Who? Okay, do we have any other? Anyone else, Mr. Story, raising their hand who would wish to make public comment?
I just see questions in the in the chats that we are all able to see. I do not see anyone else raising their hand. Again, if you have a would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. It's at the like Mayor Bowman or Mayor Bynum said, it's at the bottom of your screen, and I will allow you to speak.
And I would I would recommend that if you have a comment, please make it publicly. The chat is a little. I mean, I know I'm not able to to conduct a meeting and read. It feels like notes that are being passed. So I want to focus on the public comment portion and and kind of go through the right channels on that. So if you have a public comment, instead of instead of putting it in a chat, please, we'll recognize you. We'd love to hear from you. We have a lot of we've gotten a lot of emails from citizens concerned about this, both about allowing businesses to reopen and and about trying our best to keep everyone safe. And of course, that's what we are always striving to do as elected officials. Mr. Story.
Mr. Gallegos. Go ahead.
Great. Mr. Gallegos, would you like to make comments? And if so, the floor is yours. Please introduce yourself.
All right. Is the microphone on?
It is. We can hear you loud and clear.
All right. This is Martin Krespin. I'm sitting here with Matt. And the question that I had was that we operate a bingo operation at the Elks that we're trying to raise funds for our charities. Is there any tentative date that we can begin working bingo, even if we have all of the people here wearing masks mandatory, all the clients and the workers? If we did it, if we kept it down to thirty percent, is there a projected date when we can come live and begin doing that?
Dr. A, can you help us answer this question about bingo at the Elks Club being allowed? And if that would fit under this variance request, or if that would be in an upcoming one?
That's a good question. I I saw some email exchanges today between this on this matter, and I believe at this point is that it's being reviewed by the public health director under the current orders and how that would relate. And then you can make a comment on what this variance application would do for that in that email. So sir, we're we're aware of the question, and the team is researching it right now under the existing public health order, and then we'll comment to you on what the variance would allow. Just know that I think the public health perspective is we want to encourage operations in a safe way. So we will interpret that. We'll interpret the guidance as as we can, not trying to keep people from operating, but trying to get people to operate as long as they can do so following the existing orders. So we will get back in touch with you on that specific matter.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. We also have Mr. Feeley who would like to speak.
Great. Mr. Feeley, I will turn it over to you. Please introduce yourself. You're up, Eric Feeley. We can come back to you if you're fiddling with a button. That's fair. In the meantime, I will ask Dr. Dragne, can you comment on how the Montrose Recreation Center fits under the this part? You know, part of it is a gym, part of it is a pool. Can you can you elaborate a little on how you think the variance would or would not apply to the recreation center? That's a question I can see in the comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So at the end of the day, the interpretation of regulations and variances will be under the purview of Public Health Director Jim Austin. But I would advise the Public Health Director that that for their gym components that they can operate under the variance applications that we've made for a gym, which would include language saying that customers should be encouraged to wear a face cloth, face covering, excuse me, when entering the facility and while in the facility, unless that face covering inhibits their participation in those fitness activities. And that the the use of equipment in the fitness center should be limited to no closer than every other machine or separated by six feet, whichever is further, so that participants are not exercising right next to each other. That smaller exercise room with poor ventilation should be discouraged from use. Good sanitation policies in place with the equipment and with the employees, and that they are screening their employees for symptoms and temperature and excluding if they fail that. Asking customers if they aren't ill to not come into the facility, and also limiting the number of clients to thirty percent of the facility's occupant load. Group classes would not be allowed in the variance saunas, pools, and shared spaces, excuse me, shared spaces would also remain closed. And food and drink bars would remain closed as well.
Thank you very much. I've been asked to give some tips on unmuting oneself. If all else fails, I believe you can hold your space bar down. And while you're holding it down, that will unmute you. And since you probably can't hold it down for more than three minutes, that works well, too. In all fairness, let's see, Mr. Feeley, I'll circle back to you, and if you want to make a comment, you can hold your space. There we go. You went from muted to unmuted. So if you start talking, let's see if we can hear you.
That was me.
You unmuted him. Well, maybe he really doesn't have a question, or he got an important phone call and stepped away. Do we see anyone else with their hand up who would like to make a comment?
Just Counselor Frank.
Okay, Mr. Frank.
Just for a clarification for the public, that the effects of this variance will only take place after the governor gives his acceptance and issuance of the variance. Just the fact of submitting it doesn't allow the city or county to change any of the current stay-at-home, safer-at-home, distancing, any of that. We can't change any of that until this variance by the county is accepted by the governor. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, sir. Yeah, just us submitting it, and our Board of County Commissioners approving it, the Public Health Director approving it, and the hospital approving it, is still not enough. We are asking for a variance from a state executive order and public health order. Our our branches here do not have the ability to overturn those. We are asking for a variance.
Thank you. We have another public comment from Mr. Let me get this correct. Austin Lloyd, who was unable to unmute himself, but but he typed it. I said I would read it. Can the doctor explain why other demographics that have done no business destroying shutdowns do not have numbers that are any higher than Montrose, et cetera? I see a lot of data showing the shutdowns do no real benefit.
Yeah, that's a it's a good question. You know, that's applying another population and demographic to our situation, which may not be applicable. We we know that based on doubling time understandings of the virus, that our first case was sometime in February. We didn't know it. Our first diagnosed case wasn't until March. So it was here, and it was doubling. It was, you know, one person then gets becomes two, two becomes four, four becomes eight, et cetera. And so we saw an exponential growth curve in the number of cases that eventually led to our first hospitalization, March twenty-third. And so if you looked at the exponential growth curve, if we had done nothing, we would have had over a hundred and twenty people hospitalized. That is a surge for a hospital that has a capacity of fifty. So to say that some other community, you know, was did it differently, and look how good they are. Of course, they're a different community. They had different case rates, they had different demographics, different social distancing, different public health interventions, et cetera. In a pandemic response, you can never do a good job. You either do too much, and no one got sick, and then everybody will say you overreacted. Or you do nothing, and everybody dies, and then you're told you underreacted. We're not going to be told you did a great job, just the right number of people died, and just the right number of businesses shut down. We're trying to do the best with what we have. And what we were told from a national level was that if nothing was done, over two million Americans would have died. And so I, like you, do not have a crystal ball, and I and I don't know what the future would have been if we had chosen a different path. What I can tell you is that the models and projections at the time said we had to do something. Or else we would have overwhelmed our system, and people were would have gone without ventilators. I'll remind everybody on that we had set up protocols at the state level that allowed for the choosing of who got a ventilator and who did not. We were in unprecedented times. You could have showed up to a hospital in a worst-case scenario and had been told, I'm sorry, there is no resource for you. And they were going to die, a hundred percent death rate, if you needed critical care, and there was no no bed available. And I'm not saying that to scare you. That's what we were told. That's what we were under the impression of what could happen in a virus we didn't know much about when we were seeing that ten percent of our case rates were dying in Montrose alone. And so doing the best with what we got. And I think that what what happened worked. We saw that our doubling time, the number of cases, the hospitalizations, were exponentially growing until a peak on April sixth, when we had five. And then the stay-at-home order had gone in effect March twenty-seventh. It took a little bit of time for that to show up in in the in the effectiveness because, of course, people get exposed, they get sick, they show up eight days later afterwards, and they get tested, et cetera. And we can show that that had an impact. We went from an exponential growth curve in both number of cases and number of hospitalizations to a reducing number of cases. That didn't happen by luck. That happened because of intervention. Our doubling time was estimated to be initially five days. During the stay-at-home order period for the first two weeks, we estimate that we changed the doubling time from five days to a negative ten days. We started to reduce. Then it went to a negative forty-three. And so these public health interventions worked. I see in the chat, too, a comment about mask use, and there's no data for it. The absence of data is not an absence of proof. Think about that. When was the last time we studied mask use in a COVID- nineteen pandemic? It's never happened because we've never been through this. And so what I can tell you is I spit when I talk. If you guys watched the county video that we put up a week ago, I proved it. I put some nasty stuff in my mouth that glowed under UV, and you could see that saliva and droplets spill from your mouth when you talk. And if we think that we have community spread and that eighty percent of people can have mild or no symptoms, and they're going to go out and talk to each other, then they're going to spread droplets. In a droplet-based disease transmission, you're going to expose other people. And so in using common sense, one of the first victims of the COVID- nineteen pandemic, you would imagine that stopping droplets from entering from entering somebody else's face from your mouth may lower the risk of them getting the virus.
Thank you for addressing mask use. I'm not going to read anonymous comments in in their verbatim. You need a you need a name to make a comment, but I do appreciate you addressing the mask use. Before we move on to council discussion, Mr. Story.
Mr. Stockton, there's one more question, Mayor. Mr. Stockton would like to speak.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Stockton, can you please introduce yourself for the record, and then I will turn it over to you?
This is Dave Stockton. Actually, it's my wife has got a question, so then go ahead.
Yes, I know about the testing that is being done by Abbott. I also know about the San Miguel test trial that occurred about a month ago. I need to know if and fact we, as a county, will be able to test in the same manner San Miguel did. And if so, when might that happen?
Great. Thank you very much for your question. I will turn that over to Dr. Dragne to address. Can you address, I think, I I'm curious, two two kinds of testing, both the antibody test to see if you've had it and recovered, and a test to see if you've been exposed in the last five to fourteen days to know if you might be sick but asymptomatic? And who can get those tests?
Thank you for that question. So, you know, I, early on, the county met with the CEO of the company who offered the antibody testing in San Miguel County, and we had frequent meetings with their medical advisor and their public health director. It was decided at that time, after reviewing the the story of the three bears, is it too early, too late, or just right? That at that time that that was implemented, it was too early. That we were likely to have a lot of negatives that would not aid in our epidemiologic understanding or our response. And we chose not to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to do that test. The antibody testing has consistently been not recommended by public health officials from all levels of government. Because at this point, we don't know how long your IgG or the antibody that's supposed to give you long-term immunity will last. If we test you today and you have IgG, what we can tell you is that you were exposed, and you developed antibodies against it. What we can't tell you is how long you will be immune from SARS-CoV- two, the virus that causes COVID- nineteen. If we look back at SARS-CoV- one back in two thousand and three, there are studies that show that the IgG levels were positive for about two years, maybe longer, but there was certainly waning in people's immunologic response there. And then for IgM, that tells you if you've had an acute infection with it. Again, if you check it too early, you'll miss it. Have to check it just right. And that will tell you if you've been acutely infected, and those levels probably stay positive somewhere around twelve weeks. That's been shown out of some data from folks in China. And and yet, we can't use that to clinically make a diagnosis. And that's being recommended through the medical societies not to do that because the IgM, you don't know if that is just up from ten weeks ago, if it's up from ten days ago. We don't know. So I antibody testing today, because of the lack of the information and no knowledge that we have related to it, is really helpful more for epidemiologic modeling than anything. What it could tell us, if we had a bunch of IgG tests back in our community, is whether we should still consider most of our communities susceptible to this virus or not. Even recognizing that even if you have the antibodies, we don't know how much that protects you. Is it eighty percent effective, twenty percent? And how long will it last? Are you positive today, and then next month it's gone? We don't know. So that should be worked out as time goes on and more vaccine trials go on. They'll be studying those kind of responsiveness. At this point, again, the antibody testing is more for epidemiologic purposes. If you do have a positive IgM antibody, then that is a reportable event to public health. If it's an IgG, If it's an IgG, it just means that you've been exposed at some point. We have no idea how long ago that would have been. With that being said, LabCorp and Quest have both been offering antibody testing for, for at least two weeks now. Many people have taken advantage of that because they were curious and they wanted to know. And that's okay. I, I'm curious, as many of you would be, do I have the antibodies? We all kind of want to know. And the reality is you probably do have some protection, even if we don't know how much, if you do have antibodies. Montrose Hospital has also been offering antibody testing, but it's through their Mayo contract and so the specimen would have to be sent off to Mayo Lab. Later this month, Montrose Hospital, as I articulated earlier, will be bringing in their own in-house ability to run antibody testing. There's also a psychological benefit for the community to have this testing done. People like data and they will feel somewhat reassured knowing that they do have antibodies against it, if they do. But there's also a psychological risk. What happens if you test negative and are you ready to deal with that? One of the things I asked San Miguel County when they were doing this testing is, what do you do if it all comes back negative? Because all you've done now is prove to your community that indeed you are susceptible. And essentially, that's what happened. The testing, most of the folks tested negative for antibodies there. And so the summary there is that you can get antibody testing today. The PCR testing looks for RNA fragments, the RNA that actually gives the, the virus its, its power. Now, just detecting RNA does not mean that you have a virus that is infectious. The PCR test is a better measure of looking to see if soldiers are on the battlefield. They can't tell you if the soldiers have been wounded, killed, or are active. You would have to do a viral culture to know that. And that is not a routinely done or even commercially available. Test in, in wide acceptance. That would be more for research purposes and that gets back to where I articulated the nine-day. Limit that has been seen in being able to culture the virus from symptomatic persons from their onset of symptoms. So in summary, today you can get the Abbott ID Now PCR testing if indicated in a low probability case through the emergency department. Meaning they want to, they think you have heart failure, but they need to make sure you don't have COVID. They might do the test there to rule it out. But it would not be a good test for somebody that has a high probability of having the disease. Because those point-of-care Abbott systems right now are not sensitive enough and we doctors wouldn't trust that result if we really thought you had it. The PCR nasal pharyngeal swab and the saliva test have higher levels of sensitivity and are more likely to detect the virus in your nasal passages. That virus, or at least the RNA fragments, may be detectable for just over three weeks in your nasal passages. Even though we know that that does not mean you are still infectious during that entire time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Adragna, for a really thorough answer to testing. I know that we as a community and as a council could probably keep you here all afternoon asking questions. But we originally had asked you for an hour of your time. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to put up on the chat. The county's website, which has links to what to do if you have symptoms, local resources and local public health orders. And I think that is a great resource for our community to use. I don't, I don't see any more public comment. Mr. Story, do you see anyone wanting to make public comment that I'm missing?
Do know, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we are gonna move on either council questions for Dr. Adragna. But if there are none, we're going to move on to council discussion about the particular request from the county. That is in front of us right now. Any questions for Dr. Adragna? Because he, I think, has to jump off at a certain point. Okay. So discussions about this, we usually discuss a little before making a motion or I can entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the county variance request as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowman.
Second thought.
Second that.
I heard both of you, but I think I heard Mr. Frank first. So for the official record, I'll say that Mr. Frank seconded. Mr. Bowman's motion. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I will ask Mr. Piccolo to take a roll call vote on the motion before us.
Okay, Barbara Bynum?
I vote aye.
Doug Glasgow?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Let me pull up. I'm, I'm operating on multiple screens. Let me pull up the agenda. Now, we can have, if there's public comment, the next item on our agenda is general public comment. So this will be the time in our agenda that if you have a public comment that you want to make that is not relevant to the agenda item we just discussed. You could have an opportunity now. I would remind public that all of those same things I talked about before still apply. Because the item isn't on our agenda and it isn't noticed. It can be a back and forth. So you can't ask us, you know, why does the dog park not have more benches? And then we answer you and what we do is we listen and then we consult with staff and we get, we get back to you with an answer. But this is our, this is the opportunity where you can tell us what's on your mind and we're here to listen. So that being said, do we see anyone raising their hand for public comment? And I'll give it a few seconds. I was told that maybe I was a little too quick last meeting and that people, it does take them a while to figure out how to raise their hand. Or how to figure out the buttons on their phone. We all get better at these online meetings every week that we have them. Those of us who have a dozen a day are getting, are getting really good at it. I don't know. But I know for a lot of people, this is not something they're doing all the time. I'm really just stalling now. Mr. Story, did anyone? Okay.
No, I do not see any hands raised.
Great, thank you. This morning, we had a great information session where Mr. Bill Bell and Commissioner Sue Hansen. Took questions from the public for an hour. And I will just reiterate what they said in closing, which is that they and all of your local elected and leaders. We do want to hear from you. It's how it informs us as we make decisions for our community. So please continue to reach out. You can send emails to, to your elected officials. You can send an email to council@ci.montrose.co.us. And that goes to all of your city councillors and our leadership at the, at the city staff. We want to hear from you. So please let us know what you're thinking. Let us know what's on your mind. If you have questions or you heard something. Come ask us and give us an opportunity to get you a good answer to your questions. Okay, next on our agenda, we always have general city council discussion, which is an opportunity. For both of our city leadership to chime in with information as well as our city councillors. So I'll start with our city leadership. I see, I see Chief Hall, so I'm going to call on you. Can you, is there anything in particular that we need to know at this special city council meeting from the chief of police?
So do you think that we're going to be going to a tier-three operation for some city operations? But I think I'll just defer to our city manager to maybe discuss that. So I have really nothing further.
Any other department heads? Instead of calling on everyone that I see, I really should just let you unmute yourself and chime in. Mr. Bowman, are those the birds in your backyard? I can hear tweeting. That's lovely sounding.
Must be.
A nice outdoor location. I know I couldn't carry both my computers on my iPad outside, or I might be trying that. Okay, Ms. Rossi, I see that you, you're there now. Does that mean you want to chime in with some information? Great, unmute yourself and, and would you introduce yourself too? I, you know, I learned a little by watching this school board meeting that if you don't know who folks are and they don't introduce themselves, but you're watching, you feel a little lost. So we, so we have a lot of people watching us today. Will you introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Chelsea Rossi, Director of Business Innovation and Tourism here at the City of Montrose. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to simply make a comment in thanking you, council and other people who have been working on this. Because I know our business community is grateful for this move and Dr. A, thank you for the work that you've done on it. Just as an advocate for business, I can tell you that they are happy about this, that they are grateful for it. And a lot of business owners, we've been in conversation with regarding this this week. And I think they are prepared to make good decisions, hopefully most of them. And we've had a lot of really positive reaction from the communication that we've been doing. So I just wanted to thank you and let you know that I think it's going to be a positive experience if the variance is granted and I'm excited to see what happens.
Thank you very much. Any other department heads before I ask Mr. Bell? Seeing none, our city manager, Bill Bell, what can you update us on today?
I think the most important thing is following up on what Chief Hall just mentioned. We'll move to tier-three starting Monday at eighteen. And with that means that some of our city services that have been provided via telephone or over the internet will be done behind glass. So if we remember back to our first step when we moved to, from tier one, two, and then three. We started working behind the glass at the police department lobby and over at the visitor's center. And we're going to go back to that starting Monday. So for anyone who wants to work with utility billing. And our customer service techs that work within the finance department, they'll be located over at the visitor's center in the lobby there. Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four PM, starting on Monday. And anyone who wants to interact with the municipal court staff and handle your court business can do the same at the lobby of the visitor's center. The same hours, eight AM to four PM, Monday through Thursday. And anyone who wants to interact with the customer service representatives at the police department. That will be in the lobby of the police department building through the main entrance there. And that will be Monday through Thursday, seven AM to six PM. Unless you're specifically looking for VIN inspections. We've had a lot of requests. We have a backlog of people needing VIN inspections. Those will be done in a proper, safe manner, but a little different hours, twelve noon to eight PM. To allow a little more customer convenience because of the amount of the backlog on that. So again, police lobby, behind the glass, seven AM to six PM, Monday through Thursday. Unless you're specifically looking for VIN inspections, that is noon to eight PM, Monday through Thursday. Any questions about any of that?
If someone is more comfortable doing their business with the city from home, is everything they need to do, perhaps with the exception of a VIN inspection. But is almost everything else still available via telephone or online if they don't want to leave home?
I believe we would still encourage anyone who wants to do business with the city in a manner that, that they feel most comfortable. Continue to do it that way. We're still going to be working from home, a lot of us. We're going to try to honor the commitment other manufacturers and employers have to honor. And keep our workforce at fifty percent or less. And so between the police department, public works and parks and the golf course, that's pretty much half of our workforce. And so a lot of our other office personnel and stuff will be in and out. We'll still be doing a lot over the computer and over the telephone. And we converted a lot of our permits and applications to electronic form during this time. And we want to encourage people to use that as well. If there's anything specific related to the PD operations, the chief wants to mention or Shaney is on here as well from the finance side. Anything that can't be done electronically, please go ahead and bring that up now if I missed it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't see anyone else from city leadership wanting to make a comment, so I'll now go through our city councillors. Would anyone like to make a comment? Anything? Mr. Glassbell?
Yes, I'd just like to point out to people as we do try to get back to somewhat more normal. We still need to take extra care. I haven't seen Superman out there in a suit. So I don't think the rest of us are. And we're all vulnerable. So I think it's upon all of us to respect others and, and provide that care and be careful out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Glassbell. I want to just take a pause. Dr. Adragna is gonna, is gonna jump off right now. Thank you very much, Dr. Joe Adragna, for joining us. I think your presentation was excellent. Every time I hear it, I learn something new. And the draft of that was part of our city council packet. I bet you that the final version, which only is slightly different, is probably available under the county commissioners meeting packet. But will be available in lots of places for people to see.
Yes, and, and thank you so much, Madam Mayor and the council members. Appreciate the public questions and comments and we're here to serve. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Really, yeah. Round of applause for Dr. Joe. I will continue asking my fellow councillors for their comments. Okay, Mr. Frank, you're up.
I just wanted to thank the county and the city for being responsive to the needs of the community to be able to open up businesses again. I think that is a critical component of making our lives return to some normalcy. But to echo what Mr. Glassbell says, let's do it in a smart, safe manner. Just make it a, a, a good choice and exercise common sense.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frank. Next. Nothing from you, Mr. Bowman, today? Nothing from you, Mr. Anderson? Okay, great. Then I will, I will finish up. Okay, as a mom, I can't help but to say I have two kiddos graduating, one from high school this week and one from college. So to all of the twenty twenty graduates, whether you are graduating from middle school. Or you are graduating from college, or you are graduating from Arroyo and Montrose or Lathau High Schools, or from Peak, or from Vista, my hat is off to you. I know this has been really, really difficult and I think that we can particularly empathize with, with you all. Because at one point or another, all of us have graduated from something and it is one of those memories that you can remember for your whole life. And so I know our community is really behind all of you graduates and our hats go off to you virtually. Congratulations on your graduation. Round of applause. Fantastic. Actually, I see a couple of us in this room right now have graduates. Okay, so with that, I believe that we can take a motion to adjourn our council meeting and adjourn by acclamation.
Madam Mayor, adjourn.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Frank. We are adjourned by acclamation. Thank you everyone for coming and thank you to everyone who joined city council. We hope to see you again at another meeting. Thank you. Bye.